And we're recording.
Jenny Lee.
It's seven oh one.
Will you let me in Jenny? On the, the second one and I'll sign off on this one.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I've been letting everybody in. So when I see it. Okay, Audrey, you're, you're in.
Okay, can we have the time for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice. We're so together there. All right, we have a leftover draft. Oh, boy. I just lost my video. Okay, I've got an extra screen on my laptop and it's, I lost the video. We want to have the consent agenda for the March nine minutes. Anybody have a motion for that?
I make a motion, wait, I make a motion, we accept them as they were presented. I saw nothing.
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Pugsley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Assembly. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Webster. Okay. That's past, she's, you're muted Audrey. Now, the consent agenda for the April thirteen minutes, you have a motion to accept those.
I have found a mistake on page four. Of that, half minutes. And where it says motion, the second one just above the number five. Says upon Commissioner Webster's motion and then Commissioner Webster's second. I don't think she did a. And I don't know who did the other. So I don't know what.
I'll, I can go back in and listen to who seconded it and correct that. Okay.
All right, so with the correction, someone have a motion with.
With that correction, I'm. Second.
Okay. Take Commissioner Pugsley, ready vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Assembly.
Aye.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Webster.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Do I have any topics from the floor or the computer? Not on the public hearing agenda. We have five minutes if someone has something. Please indicate to Jenny or Jacob.
Looks like there's two folks in the public. If you raise your hand or send a chat.
This is something that's not on the agenda. If not, if not, let's continue to the public hearing agenda. Time is now seven oh five. PM, the public hearing is now open. This is the quasi judicial land use hearing. The subject of this hearing is a request for annexation. The subject property is identified on the county assessor's map as lot seventeen oh one. Is this the right one? Seventeen oh one on map four N one W five C C. The applicant is Roy and Jinky McCullough. The owner is the same. Because quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, we will take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact on collective interest or bias in this matter? Seeing none, does anyone from the audience subject to the ability of Commissioner to make a fair decision? Okay. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, neutral testimony, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, final questions, closing of the record, deliberations, and decision. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS one nine seven point seven six three five. The following is a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision. City of St. Helens municipal code seventeen point two eight point zero three zero, St. Helens municipal code seventeen point zero eight point zero four zero one eight, St. Helens municipal code seventeen point zero eight point zero six zero, and St. Helens municipal code seventeen point one one two point zero three two zero three oh two. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria as described, or other criteria in the plan such as the comprehensive plan or land use regulation, such as that found in the development code, which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue including constitutional or other issues related relating to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing in person or in writing, or failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the.
Sounds like Dan's lagging a bit.
Or damages and circuit court. Did you, what was that?
You were lagging.
Oh, you just lagged out a little bit, but it sounds like you're to the end.
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right, do we have a staff report?
Yes, I will share. Let me just readjust really quickly. Can you all hear me? Okay, I, sometimes this is too quiet. It sounds all right. Okay.
It's fine.
Um, great. So we've got two annexations tonight. There's some overlap or similarities between the two. So the second one should be a little bit faster, but we'll talk about this one a little bit more. So where are we? So the subject property, here's Gable Road right before it turns into Bachelor Flat Road. And it's, the subject property is located along Columbia Boulevard right at that intersection there. Specifically, the subject property is this pole portion of this, of this lot, it's called Sixteenth Lane. And this portion of the property is actually in the process of being developed with a building permit for a single family dwelling, which has been approved. Jacob worked on that specific application. So if there's questions about that, when we get to it, he, he might know a little bit more about that approval. The reason that this owner applied for an annexation was part of that building permits approval. It's a property that only a portion of it's in city limits currently. Sometimes there's these weird remnants of properties that are not in city limits when the remainder is, and this is one of those. This portion was annexed in the late nineties, likely as part of this larger subdivision development to the north. For whatever reason, it wasn't included in the subdivision development, and so they were, we were left with this partially in the city and partially not in the city lot. So we're fixing that now. The subject property is about a half an acre. Just this little piece. I know it looks smaller than that, but surprisingly, it's, it's half an acre. As I mentioned, the, the properties in the process of getting developed, they actually, as part of that development, extended the sanitary sewer line. It used to terminate right about here at the intersection of Gable Road. And so they went through the process, designed and engineered the public facility, and actually extended a pretty significant portion of our sewer line to get to the subject property. We always send out referral comments to other agencies, including our own, and our city engineer asked for a water line easement. There's a public water line that runs through the portion of Sixties Lane, and it may or may not already have a public water line easement for it. We know that this property is large and may be further subdivided in the future, so we could get an easement at that time if this, this property were the subject of a partition or a subdivision in the future. So that addresses that. The other comment we received was from the county. Their public works department actually requested that the applicant get a Columbia County access permit, and that's because Columbia Boulevard in this section is a county road. And so you need an access permit to access off of the property. And their driveway approach and their stormwater culvert didn't meet the standards that the county had, and so they requested that, and actually that's something we can solve through the building permit process, and so it's not really needed as a condition of approval on this annexation, but it is just another one of those comments we got through the process. So we always look at whether or not the annexation goes to the voters. In this case, it's within the urban growth boundary. It's going to be subject to the city's comprehensive plan, and it's next to city limits. And it conforms to all other city requirements, so it's not subject to voter approval. So once we go through the process, this will become city limits. So the current zoning is Columbia County, single family residential, so it's R ten for county. And our options are either R seven or R ten, given that zoning. So in order to avoid a split zone property, which we don't like, and also there's no other R ten surrounding properties. Staff's recommendation is to zone this property R seven. There's no need for a traffic impact analysis. This is a pretty small annexation, similar zoning, similar density. The site already has access to city water. We have capacity to support that. As I mentioned, they, they extended the city sewer, so they'll have access to sewer. Something also interesting about this site, when they were extending the sewer line, they had to do some significant excavation, and their contractor started to dump that fill from the excavation onto the property without a grade fill permit. And so in the staff report, you'll see a mention of that, that if this land were subdivided or developed in the future, that fill would need to be engineered because there was living matter in it. It was not engineered fill. And so the staff report just acts as another one of those breadcrumbs to alert us to that issue when it gets developed in the future, if it gets developed in the future. So upon annexation, you, staff recommends R seven zoning. The comprehensive plans designation would be suburban residential incorporated SR. And that's pretty much it. That's staff recommendation. So zone it comp plan wise suburban residential incorporated, zone it R seven, and designated as developing. So that's staff's recommendation. Are there questions?
I'm just curious if Sixties is, is it improved to a private road at this point or?
No, it's currently gravel. Our code does allow for some areas to be gravel, but not the first. I think it's twenty feet or twenty-five feet from a developed road. So as part of his building permit, he'll have to pave this, this kind of sectionary road. And then he'll also have to pave parking for his actual building, but the remainder of the road could be gravel at this point.
Any other questions for staff? Does the applicant make, want to make a presentation as the applicant here?
I'm not seeing this any.
Okay, does any, is anyone with neutral testimony, not in favor or against the proposal? Put up your hand or say something in the chat. Anyone in opposition to the application? All right, so opposition, no rebuttal. Does the commission have any final questions of staff? That's all you can ask? All right. Good. No further questions from the commission and no further responses from staff. The public record is closed. This matters. Turn to the table for deliberations or oral discussion. Maybe else have, have anything to deliberate on this?
Pretty straightforward.
Right, go, motion to accept the staff recommendation?
I'll move that we approve the annexation based on the staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm just gonna read down the list. Vice Chair Hubbard, what's your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Webster.
Aye.
Commissioner Assembly. Commissioner Pugsley. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Did you vote, Commissioner Assembly? I didn't hear. I think you're frozen. Commissioner Assembly, what's your vote?
Her mouth says aye.
It's, yeah, it's weird. She's not muted, but her microphone's not working.
Can she have a thumbs up?
Yes, or maybe try muting and unmuting.
Look at, there's Christina.
Immediately there. Oh, I think I just say something.
That was me. Jacob, not Sheila.
She's got a thumbs up. That's, it's like a yes to me.
That works. A thumbs up works.
Do, do we need a vote for me to sign something?
No, this will go to city council. This is just.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay.
Well, by the time you get to the script, maybe Christina or IT department will fix the top.
Well, I'll go, I'll do the the next hearing, I guess. Commissioner Assembly, can you hear? You can hear? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read then. It is now seven nineteen. The public hearing is now open. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing. The subject of this hearing is a request for an annexation. The subject property is identified on the county assessor's map as lot forty-three hundred on map four N one W five BA. The applicant is Stephen and Stephanie Weber. The owner is the same. Because quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, it will take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter? We'll assume that Commissioner Assembly doesn't either. Does anyone from the audience subject to the ability of Commissioner to make a fair decision? Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, neutral testimony, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, final questions, closing of the record, deliberations, and decision. We might not do all those. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS one nine seven point seven six three five. The following is a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision. City of St. Helens municipal code seventeen point two eight point zero three zero, city of St. Helens municipal code seventeen point zero eight point zero four zero one eight, city of St. Helens municipal code seventeen point zero point zero six zero, eight point zero six zero. City of St. Helens municipal code seventeen point one one two point zero three zero two. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria as described, or other criteria in the plan such as the comprehensive plan or land use regulation, such as that found in the development code, which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue including constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing in person or in writing, or, or failure to raise the issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the approval, proving authority and opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to Luba, the Land Support of Appeals on that issue, and precludes an action for damages and circuit court. That's longer than there is gonna be. All right, staff, you have something to present?
Can, can we hear you, Commissioner Sibley?
Can you hear us now?
Yay, yes.
Hey, all right.
Don't touch anything.
Great. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was fast. Okay, so this time our subject property is along North Vernonia Hill Crest. So this should look fairly familiar. This is the Emerald Meadows subdivision that you all reviewed. So it actually abuts that subdivision along the backside here. And so this property owner, you know, has a flag lot. You can see the pole portion of Butts Hill Crest Road, and then a portion of the property of Butts North Vernonia as well. It's about point three five acres, and it's developed with a single family dwelling already. They filed a consent because they are on septic and would like access to connect to city sewer, which they have access to without extending the main line. So it's a pretty simple connection sewer is available. So their access is weird. They have a circular driveway. This is actually off of Vernonia. So even though they have that pole portion, this is the pole portion that abuts Hill Crest that is undeveloped and gravel, and actually has a shed on it. They have a circular driveway off of Vernonia, which is where they get access, and paved and improved approach. Both frontages lack frontage improvement, so there are no sidewalks, curb and gutter on either frontage. Hill Crest is a county road, and actually North Vernonia in this location is also a county road. I'm sorry, it's actually a city road. We just did that sidewalk project. I don't know. Let's see. So the property is currently served on city water. It's one of those ones that has access to water, but never annexed, because that's a newer policy. Let's see, let's look at the zoning. So we sent referrals out. Both the Columbia County Planning Department and Public Works didn't have any comments or concerns with this specific annexation, so that makes that easy. This property is obviously within the UGB, is subject to our comp plan, and it's next to city property, and so it's also not subject to voter approval. We are in an identical zoning situation. The property is zoned R ten for the county. So our options are R seven or R ten for city zoning upon annexation, and it's subject to the same comp plan designation. So that's, that's identical. Obviously, we have capacity in our water system and our sewer system to support this property, so that's not an issue. So staff's recommendation in this case, upon annexation is to zone it R seven. This is because there's no R ten in the vicinity. R ten would just not make sense. I think that's all I have on this one. It's, it's a pretty cut and dry scenario. Applicants wants to connect to sewer. Zoning's pretty cut and dry. I don't really have much else to say on it. Are there questions?
Why would you choose R seven over R five? That's my only question.
Yeah, so R five's not an option with our comp plan designation. We only can choose R seven or R ten. Yeah.
So I have a question. You said that doesn't have improvements along Vernonia. Will they be required to do those improvements?
Not as part of an annexation.
Not as part of the annexation, okay.
Right.
Does bring, why didn't the sidewalk, why didn't the sidewalk project go through all the way through there to Pittsburgh Road? Anyway, that's, that's another, another question.
Yeah, I don't know the, the scoping of that project. I wasn't super involved in, aside from making sure there was a sidewalk to Campbell from it. But I don't know how they picked that. My guess is just because they didn't have unlimited money. But I don't know.
And it was based on numerous complaints from the neighborhood, not that part of the neighborhood. And so I think it was a combination of where the demand or need, well, the need is arguably there too, but where the demand was to alleviate some of the pedestrian woes.
There also are sidewalks across the street that connect too, so that might have had to do with it.
Yeah. Any questions that actually apply to the annexation for staff? Hearing none. Is the applicant available? Would they like to make a presentation or statement?
Not seeing anybody.
Does anybody want to test, testify in support of the application? Or neutral testimony or opposition? All right. Hearing none? Hearing no further questions from the commission, no further responses from staff. The Blake record is closed. This matters. Turn to the table for deliberations or oral decision. Anybody want to talk about it, or you want to just move on? We have a motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Make a motion. We accept the staff's recommendation. That it be zoned R seven and I need, I need it in front of me.
I'll second it anyway. You got it, whatever. Yeah, just, just leaving it as staff recommendations, fine. It's in writing in the report.
Yeah, got it. Been moved in second and.
What's that?
Moved in second and Shannon, we're pretty screwed here.
Okay, let's, let's vote. Vice Chair Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Webster.
Aye.
Commissioner Assembly.
Aye.
Commissioner Pugsley.
Aye.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Now, my, my script says that we need to have a motion for the chairperson to sign the final decision. Why is that different than the last one? Is that wrong?
It shouldn't be.
So we don't need a, a motion to, for this committee chairperson to sign it then?
Yeah, that, that would be a wrong.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll make sure. Hey. The planning commission annual report to the city council. Discussion.
Okay, so you got a little two pager in your report. These should be familiar. They've looked similar for the last many years. And it's always kind of different with the planning commission than other committees, because the planning commission usually doesn't have to look for something to do. It kind of comes before you. But if you look at the numbers, they're kind of interesting. For many years, you were at ten meetings a year, and last year it's a good thing we don't give you overtime paid, because you had thirteen meetings. You're only supposed to have twelve. And that extra meeting, if you recall, for most of you, was a special meeting we had for that Schlumpberger land partition on Belton Road. The first time we went through it, not the second time, which we're at now. And if you see the acceptance, acceptance agenda items, planning director decisions are slightly less. If you see the acceptance acceptance agenda items, planning director decisions are slightly less and you know, that corresponds with, things are still really busy, but they're not oh my God, this is insane. How can we do this busy, which has it has it been for the last few years? So sight relief. We're not bored, though, let me tell you. But then an increase in workshops and items which corresponds with an uptake in city projects and stuff going on. One of the, well, I have two questions for the commission. Except for one year, staff myself has presented this to the council. If there's any planning commissioner that would like to do that, you're certainly welcome to. So that's one question if anybody wants to do that stuff. And then the other question that we're supposed to pose is is there anything the council can do to support the commission? Now, last year, the commission talked about wanting to meet in person with the council to talk about a variety of issues. And there was an emphasis on meeting in person over virtually. And so, you know, we noted that to the council and they thought, you know, that's a good idea to kind of pow wow, talk about stuff. And then COVID never went away. But the council is going to start meeting in a hybrid setting, kind of what the planning commission did when COVID started where the group is in the chambers. And then other folks attend via Zoom. So the council is going to start doing that at their meetings. And you know, that may open the door for planning commission and council. So we can have that conversation with them further if you'd like. And then, you know, anything else you want to bring up with the council. So any discussions or questions? It's your turn.
We, yeah, we actually had our first meeting in the chambers yesterday with on a very interesting topic anyway. I'd like very, I'd like very, very much for us to do that. I know council members are anxious to do that. I don't know if we could arrange to have it in the council chambers or we can try something at the rec center again, but I I think that the council would be like very much to have a discussion and in person. I I'm optimistic it can be arranged.
My only comment is if it delays it again, we should I'd be okay with Zoom just so that we actually can have a meeting. So I mean, I'd prefer in person, but.
Okay, no, that that makes sense. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's been a year.
And I understand the microphone problem is corrected in the council chambers now?
Yeah, it was, the issue was a setting. People's voices are still sound lower than normal. But I did watch virtually the special meeting that occurred yesterday and the sound was much improved. Before you'd have to put your ear to the speaker and it was just really tough.
Yeah.
Oh, good. I was wondering because I I didn't take my mask off, my mask off when I was speaking one time. So I was just curious.
Okay, no, yeah, I could I could hear pretty much what everybody said. The secret in the room is to mute and unmute to prevent echo when I if I recall, that happened when the Zoomers were talking. But it wasn't that bad for the meeting yesterday.
Did someone from the commission want to make a present or or work for the year?
Isn't it in June, Jacob? The annual meeting?
Yeah, it's the first meeting in June, so it's it's coming up, June second.
So you have to be available at June second around one if you wanted to present.
Yeah, thank you, Jenny. Good, 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 important facts.
But staff's always happy to present otherwise.
And we're used to not having volunteers, so.
This is, this is not, this is not abnormal. Yeah.
It was weird when we had a volunteer, so that was.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else to say about that? Staff? All right, we'll go on to the acceptance agenda. Any of the things that were previously sent to you that you wanted to talk about?
Just one thing to note is that amended decision for the scenic resource review, you should all remember that was the variance request for First Street with Steve Pegram. And he had, he got his revised plan then without the second story. And we didn't have neighbor opposition to that proposal. And so that project is moving forward as you approved it with the variance. So the success story of the scenic resource review working.
No, I was looking at the the Sand Island review. And I was a little confused by the property lines. It looked like some of the campground was off in state lands land. And not all in the city limits. Is that true? Not, it's not the camp, not the cabins or the shelters that were talked about here, but some of the other campsites. Didn't know if there was a memorandum. Last I knew, there wasn't a memorandum of agreement with Department of State Lands for them to use as a campground, but.
Yeah, that was a depiction by Lord Columbia Engineering. There is no formal agreement and the focus of that was the cabins.
Yeah, I get that.
The other stuff is going to play out. It's hard to say.
Yeah, and as far as actual improvements with those campsites, it's just a metal ring, firing.
And on state lands, you can camp for free for up to up to two weeks. So if you want to jump the fence and camp on the state land, you don't have to pay anything. Anyway.
And so people were out doing that when we did our site visit.
So are you saying that whole third of the island is game for two weeks, not just by the ordinary high waterline?
I believe so. Yeah, let's let's the the proprietary coordinator say something different, but you can check with with Lexi. I tried to coordinator, I forget her last name, she's new. It'd be good to check. We have Department of State Lands has sometimes slightly different rules for certain properties that they become a problem like out of Jones Beach, there's there's special rules there. There's no right camping there. But as far as I know, Stan Island doesn't have those. But anyway, it's just just a point I just happened to make. Has nothing to do with the decision.
Thank you DSL for not having those rules for Jones Beach in the nineteen nineties.
There's still lots of firewood that should be in the river, but anyway. So any of the planning director decisions we noted of interest?
Yeah, the one thing I'll note of interest is the lot line adjustment at sixteen forty five Row Road Avenue. That is actually for the Armstrong World Industries site. Of course, Armstrong has left, but they still own it. And it's significant in that that's a very important industrial property to the city. And what's going on there is Armstrong and past owners had a summary judgment with DEQ. And they're separating the upland portion and the site is surrounded by wetlands. And so there's the upland portion and then the lowland portion. Although lowland, lowland has some technical upland areas. But the the main portion, they remediated some past pollution by bringing in a ton, I mean, tons and tons of gravel. Whoever had that gravel contract must be really happy. And then they're taking an old lot line and drawing that boundary around the improved or upland portion so that a purchaser can obtain that and then Armstrong will retain the lowland portion which still needs some analysis on rate of pollution and stuff. DEQ would like to obtain the lowland portion, but they don't have funds for it now. But in in the near to medium term, the the good news is that this is facilitating a transaction. Although it's not a company who's buying it, it's an investment firm. So how long it takes for another industry to get into there, I don't know, but at least it's it's something in the right direction.
And I do know that DEQ has hired a consultant that's doing, it's going to be doing the testing for in the wetland lower areas. I know they've just got a permit for that. So that's, but they, the consultant really had no idea when the cleanup would be. It's just testing at this time. Sample.
Sounds about right. So that's not your everyday lot line adjustment.
That's interesting.
We've actually been talking about it for well over a year and at first there was a couple of attempts. But they were third party attempts and then Armstrong finally said, you know, if we don't do this ourselves, it's never going to happen. So we're working with them now.
Does separating like that help to make the upland site then not a brownfield site or at least a clean site for development by disconnecting it?
Yes, that's the whole idea is that my understanding is the upland is is resolved with that capping. And then so the new purchaser will not be purchasing potential liability, which is still associated with the well and portions.
Be much easier to sell it. All right, anything from the April Planning Department report?
Yeah, I want to show you some cool pictures. And they're not like the pictures that we saw when we got Zoom bombed, so don't worry. So I'm going to share my screen. So I fooled you. We're going to have another big, long conversation about code amendments. No, I'm just kidding. It'll be a while before we get into that. But we had our semi annual report to the council. And I thought it'd be cool to share some of these photos of different places that shows that shows change over time. This is something I'm hoping to do for future ones. And I just thought you thought it would be cool to see. Well, I guess I can talk about a few things in here. That's the mountain that some of you remember from the earth removal case. It's it's on our to do list to kind of clean up some of these lot lines and stuff, but that'll that'll be later on. The Bennett Building is moving. The new windows are going to be here really soon, so that wonderful project will be coming to a conclusion this year. I'm not going to talk about everything on here. Okay, so first sequence of photos. So Elk Ridge Estates, this is that subdivision on Hanky Road. You notice the date here, two thousand thirteen. And when I took this photo, you know, back then they were reengaging this phase after it was repurchased by another property owner. And so it was just to understand what was going on there. And then we fast forward three years. They reapply. So I'm like, oh, there's some grading work here. We got to understand what's going on there. But it's interesting to see. Note that that's come your your common denominator there is that the power pole. So then three years later and now today, hey, they're actually building there. It only took, you know, two thousand thirteen to, whoops, two thousand twenty one. All right, so now we're on North Vernonia Road. And here's two thousand sixteen. And we go ahead a little bit and hey, look at that. There's sidewalks here. Now, if we were to walk to roughly here, there's a little gap in the fence and a pedestrian path from North Vernonia Road. That's something that required of the Emerald Meadows subdivision for some of you who are with us for that. And so we're going to go closer to that area and that's that's what it looked like before. And this is what it looks like now. Before. After. This is also the same subdivision. This is from Pittsburgh Road. So the these two photos aren't the exact same position. This is actually from someone's deck. I remember talking to them back at this time. But you know, big differences. Let's see, stuff, stuff, stuff. All right, so the old Violet's Villa Mobile Home Park, we've seen this transform and this has been really fascinating to see. So this is McBride Street. Nice, quiet street. And if we fast forward, that's what it looks like now. So we're able to save, you know, some of these trees here and there on the property. Some of them that were forecast to be saved were already dead, which was unfortunate, but not the developer's fault. They were, they were pretty good about trying to save trees, pretty communicative. So those are some interesting before and after pictures. So same thing Violet's Villa. Now, right here, that new Brain Street that goes in, that's that's what's here. And for for years and years, this was just a walking path. And then this is Mattson Street looking north. So there's the before. And after, big change, big change. You don't, you know, you didn't have a street here before and you certainly didn't have two hundred plus apartments and now you do. And and note, this cluster of cheese here, we were able to save some of those slow growing oaks. And right behind me is the storage facility related to the apartments. This is one of my favorites. So I talked about that path in what's now called Brain Street. And you can see it. It's well worn, well used, although not improved like that. This here is the Villagen or Motel Six along the highway. And so here it is a few years ago and then there it is now. Big change. It's still a path. It's just a lot more improved. Oh, yeah, this this one. It's just really interesting to see those changes. Oh, yeah, and the famous caboose. I forgot about this one. So in exploring Violet's Villa, you know, that's that's one of my favorite things is before a property is developed, you know, you got to see what's going on out there and it's kind of fun to explore. And I remember when I first started working with the city, this caboose, you know, was, it was discussed so much and everybody wanted to put it in their property. And we were trying to figure out, well, God, do we call this a building or not? And, you know, we can go that tackle that another time when someone wants to put a goose in their property. But it's it's on a residential property that's not developed. So now it's behind the fence. So maybe something will happen to it in the future.
I realized it was sitting on rails. I always thought it was just sitting in the dirt.
Yeah, it is. So you learned something today. And yeah, that's it. So let me stop sharing.
Jacob, where is that caboose? I've never seen that before.
Oh, that caboose. So it's you know what property we're talking about? I know you're
I don't think so.
So how long have you been in town?
I mean, I was born and raised here.
Okay, so do you remember the Violet's Villa Mobile Home Park on the highway?
Vaguely, yeah, I think so.
It was there since the forties.
Yeah, in the Bank of the West.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, right.
Okay, so that that it was kind of nestled in the woods. And if you go to the Legacy Clinic, you can see it over the fence. That picture was actually taken from the apartments. you can see it over the fence. That picture was actually taken from the apartments in one of their back parking lots.
It'd make a great tiny house.
Yeah. Yeah, I would just like at some point just to walk by.
A little bit of cleanup. I'm surprised he doesn't make it a tiny house.
So
no, I'm not.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you go into the legacy parking lot, you just kind of look at well, there's one residential lot that wasn't developed on that block. Well, maybe a couple, but there's one larger one. And if you're kind of looking closer, you'll, you'll be able to see that caboose.
That's cool. I, I just like to go see it. I, I never knew that was there. That's, that'd be a cool thing to see.
You never know what you're going to learn. So that's what, that's what I have for the, and I, I can't remember what was significant in the actual April report. A lot of stuff going on.
Does anybody have anything for your permission items? Will?
I have one thing. Sorry, there's going to be an announcement tomorrow. That's announcing a Riverwalk survey and open house or public forum. You may have seen the press release that went out last week for it. So at six o'clock on Wednesday next week, we are soliciting feedback about the type of experience people want to have along the water in Columbia View Park and just outside the park. And then the, the design all the way down to Plymouth Street for what we're calling the Riverwalk. So if you're able to attend at six o'clock Wednesday, and then if you can't attend, there's also an online survey that's going to go live next week and then it'll stay live for two weeks. So there'll be a lot of press on the city's Facebook page. And if you're in, subscribe to our city newsletter, there will also be separate email blasts promoting the survey as well. So that's all.
Is that in person? I forget.
It'll be Zoom. Yeah, just like all the other council meetings right now. Most of them, aside from.
Sorry, that's next Wednesday?
Yes. So May 19th at six o'clock.
Jenny, I was trying to remember is, was the tack committee required to go to that or is it was optional?
Yeah, you'll, you'll get a summarized feedback from that meeting as a member of the tack. Yeah. Yeah.
I have two, two things actually. Since the council is meeting in person in the hybrid setting. And the commission has expressed interest in that. And we said that, you know, it's, it's best practice to follow suit with the council. Now we have a suit to follow. So would you like to, would you like us to start looking into that for the next planning commission meeting?
I would.
I would too.
Me too.
I'm a little vaccinated by now, maybe everybody.
Same vaccinated.
Okay. That's what I thought, but you know, I want to ask out of respect. And then the other matter is just FYI. That good old 160 Belton Road Schlumpberger partition has been appealed to the city council. So it's continuing on its journey.
Patrick, no guts, no glory.
So Patrick and the rest of the council will tackle that issue and we'll see what happens after that. However, they decide.
I, I was kind of questioning that when that was sent out, is it normal for commissioners then to comment on that? Or, I mean, I didn't really have a comment. I was just curious as to procedurally what normally happens.
You mean at, at this point in the process now that's been appealed?
I think going to the city council and it just just wondering if planning commissioners would normally comment at this point?
No, it's probably better. The, the planning commission has made their decision. So from a, really the best practice at this point is just, just to be quiet and let, let the council make their decision based on the record and testimony and stuff, you know, if any.
Is that on the 16 that they're going to do that?
No, that's June 2nd.
And June 2nd.
And it was, it, it was a unanimous decision, right? By the commission.
The planning commission vote was unanimous.
What, what was the decision that the planning commission came to? I think I, I missed that one.
Oh, yeah.
Denied.
No.
Yeah, it was, it was denied based on access.
Okay, thank you.
But remember, if, if a counselor talks to you between now and then, that is ex parte contact. And you know, they can as long as they disclose it. But I, I think it would be better if in the unlikely event the counselor does talk to you, just to have them talk to staff. Cause both sides are pretty armored up and.
Patrick's looks pretty zipped up there.
So I actually, I have a little, so I, it, it was during the campaign. And I, I don't believe I have to check the date. So walking at Dalton Lake, there were two times I did have conversation with one of the Schlumpberger parents, mother, the mother. We've known them for years. So I, and in terms of if I need to, I guess that, you know, the, the council session, is that just something I, I need to mention if it was prior to my joining the, joining the council because it happened before I was sworn in. And they were just kind of both casual comments, conversations about family and just in passing about how perplexing the the situation was. So I, so I just curious Jake, I don't know, maybe you, we can, I, you find out before June 2nd, that's just something I have to to need to, to say, but not had any substantive conversations since being sworn in.
Yeah, that, that shouldn't, that shouldn't result in any problems. And it's kind of a X star, ex parte, ex parte contact scholar question. But I think, you know, it's always better to be safe than sorry and just say, well, this is what happened. This was the time. Especially when things, the, the legality of things are elevated such as it is in this case.
Yeah. Okay.
I will say my partner Jane was cornered by one of the people involved this weekend. I didn't appreciate it.
The story was what?
This, she was walking our dog and one of the family members cornered her and asked what I have against him.
Oh.
Anyway, I didn't appreciate it. She didn't either.
Is, if there's not anything else, I'd say we can adjourn. We'll quit early. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Good night.
Thanks, man.